Check the volume on that.
Yeah. I was going to hear, Terry. I don't have control.
We're ready.
Okay.
All right, also. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our reorganization. If you could all please rise for the invocation. We have Elder Rick Northstein from Christ Community Church, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you all. It's an honor to be here this afternoon. In referring my remarks for today, I glanced at the agenda and I saw there was quite lengthy. On my phone it was like ninety some pages. I suggested to Catherine on the phone when we were setting a date and time that maybe a twenty-five to thirty-minute prayer would be appropriate. But she being the able and outfit administrator there, she immediately rescinded my invitation to speak. But I was due to glean her meaning, so you have heard a thank you in the breath of my remarks today. May we just take a moment to flower our heads, center ourselves, breathe in the spirit of God, and breathe out the cares and concerns of this day. Oh, Lord, may the words of my mouth and the meditations of my heart be pleasing to you. Sustaining and compassionate God, we thank you for this gathering today. A chance to make important decisions and to take meaningful choices, but also for a time of food and fellowship to follow. May we set our hearts upon God in all we undertake this afternoon. Lord, bless those who are to be newly sworn in, and everyone else present now, with the courage, wisdom, and patience to perform the tasks set before them in this season. May they undertake their work with cheerful and trusting hearts. We thank them for their service, and praise them for answering the call to do. Oh, Lord, you declare that you have wonderful plans for each of us, plans to prosper us and do us no harm. Help us to recall these promises in times of trouble and turmoil which surely lie ahead. Father, we acknowledge that you are our rock and our redeemer, and that your Holy Spirit made flesh in your son, Jesus Christ, is our true source of light and salvation. We thank you for the bounty you pour out of each moment. Please bless our skills and talents to your use, and us to their loving service, and help us to be ever mindful of the needs of others. In God's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with its every right and justice for all.
Take the roll call.
Mr. Kuss?
Here.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mrs. Diglio?
Here.
Mrs. LaFois?
Here.
Mrs. Teetz?
Here.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this reorganization meeting was given to the two newspapers of record and posted on the official bulletin board on January third, two thousand and twenty-five. At this time, I'd like to invite up the Honorable Michael Carlucci to swear in. Mr. Kuss and Mrs. Teetz. Who are we doing first?
She's already up.
Okay.
Very excited.
Is Karen gonna hold the Bible?
You can read after me. I state your name.
I, Michelle Teetz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
And to the governments established in this state, in the state and United States.
And upon the authority of the people.
And of the authority of the people.
That faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Kenny's holding a Bible. Sorry.
That's okay. What did you do?
I state your name.
I, John Paul Kuss.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
On the authority of the people.
Upon the authority of the people.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of the office of council member.
Perform all the duties of the office of council member. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. So help me God. So help me God.
I'll take that. All right, we're gonna do Matthews a little bit later. I'll take the Bible for mayor. Thanks. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the designation of a temporary mayor.
I make the motion to have Mr. JP Kuss as our temporary mayor.
Second?
I have a second.
I have a motion by Mrs. LaFois to nominate John Paul Kuss as temporary mayor, and a second by Councilmember Michelle Teetz. I have a roll call. Mr. Kuss?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Leonard, I need a motion to nominate the deputy mayor.
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 Sorry.
I will nominate Ms. Helen LaFois.
For mayor. And I will second that motion. Thank you.
Any discussion on that? Roll call.
Mayor Kuss?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, JP.
Everybody's in? I don't mind taking our time if you wanna get this exactly right. Okay, I state your name.
I, Helen R. LaFois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of mayor of Newton.
Of mayor of Newton.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, mayor.
Was that a fire alarm that just went off? I know, just saw.
Water alarm.
A water alarm?
Dave Simmons.
I'm not sure what that means.
Thank you. At this point in time, I would like a nomination for the selection of our deputy mayor.
I will nominate Mr. Matthew Dixon for deputy mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
And I will second that motion.
I have a nomination for deputy mayor by Councilwoman Teetz, a second by Councilwoman Diglio for the selection of Matthew Dixon. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kuss?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois?
Yes.
All right, she's sworn in.
I state your name.
I, Matthew S. Dixon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
The governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of deputy mayor.
Perform all the duties of the deputy mayor.
According to the best of your ability.
According to the best of my ability. So help me God. Thank you.
Thank you. So before we move to item eleven on our agenda, I want to welcome Mr. Willie Tolba here, representing Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill's office. He has a few words and some certificates for the council. Willie?
Yes, hello, council. Congresswoman really appreciates the warm invitation. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to make it today, but she did wanna send me with letters for the members that are starting new terms. So let's turn it down. Mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
For the deputy mayor. Congratulations in place. Congratulations. Thank you all so much for the invitation.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to comments by our town manager, the rest of the council members. Mr. Russo?
Thank you, mayor. On behalf of all Town of Newton employees, professionals, and volunteers, I want to wish Mayor LaFois and Deputy Mayor Dixon the very best of success in their new leadership roles. I look forward to working with them and all council members in continuing the great progress we have made toward making Newton a better place to live, work, and visit. I also want to express my gratitude to John Paul for his outstanding leadership as mayor in two thousand and twenty-four. As President John Quincy Adams once said, "If your actions inspire others to dream more, learn more, do more, and become more, you are a leader." These words resonate deeply as we embrace a new year with renewed purpose. I am now in my seventeenth year of service as your town manager, and I want to express my sincere gratitude for the privilege and honor of serving as the chief executive officer of this wonderful organization. Reflecting on the words of Gandhi, "The best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in the service of others." It is this spirit of service that continues to guide me as we work together for the betterment of Newton. As the county seat and economic engine of the county, the work we perform in Newton on a daily basis is critical to the long-term success and vitality of the entire region. This is a responsibility we take very seriously. As we carry out the ambitious goals, policies, and objectives of the governing body for two thousand and twenty-five, we are reminded of the wisdom of Vincent Bardi, who said, "Perfection is not attainable, but if we chase perfection, we can catch excellence." Let us aim for excellence in every endeavor. To our residents, employees, and partners, I wish you and your families the best of health, happiness, and success. To the people of Newton, I pray for your continued prosperity, safety, and well-being in the year ahead. As President Kennedy once said, "Leadership and learning are indispensable to each other." Together, let us continue to grow and achieve great things for this remarkable community. May God continue to bless the town of Newton. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Councilmember Kuss?
Keep it short. Thank you, everyone, for the support last year, and looking forward to continued success for everyone in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Diglio?
Okay, I wanna thank JP for his service for last year and for being able to work with you, not only here, but also on the First Aid Squad. We share common commonalities in several areas. And I'd like to congratulate Helen as our new mayor, as a friend, and I wanna congratulate Matt and wish you the best of luck in the future, on this next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Teetz?
Thank you. I would just like to thank the the town residents for voting myself and JP into another term. We are, I know, both looking forward to serving for the next four years, and I think we're both pretty accessible, so anybody can feel free to reach out to us. I'd like to thank also to JP for his leadership this past year as mayor, and it was great, you know, collaborating and talking with you and stuff on various topics. So I look forward to doing that with Helen and everyone else on the council. And also thank the town employees and the staff and all the professionals because you guys make this a lot easier, and your guidance and expertise, and always available to answer questions, definitely make this easier to do, as does Tom and Carrie and Kat and everyone else. So thank you. And congratulations to Helen and Matt, and I look forward to working with you guys and see what we can accomplish over the next year. So thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Deputy Mayor Dixon?
Yes. Good afternoon, and thank you to everyone who took the time to be here today. First and foremost, congratulations to Councilmember Kuss and Councilmember Teetz on their well-deserved reelections for second terms. Your dedication and hard work have clearly not gone unnoticed, and the Newton residents are truly fortunate to have such passionate individuals continuing to represent them on the council. I would like to extend my sincere thanks to Councilmember Kuss and Mayor LaFois for their outstanding service and dedication over the past year and their respective roles. Your efforts and leadership have made a positive impact on the Newton community, and your commitment is commendable. Mayor LaFois, I'm extremely excited to continue to collaborate with you in the capacity of deputy mayor. I am confident under your and Tom's guidance and vision, the council will continue to uphold the values and forward-thinking that make Newton a wonderful place to call home. As we begin this new year, I am eager to work alongside each of my fellow council members with the best interests of Newton and its residents at heart. Your passion and the way you give the best pieces of who you are makes me more confident that our collective efforts will lead to a brighter future for this community that we all love. Finally, I just wanna thank my wife and kids for their unwavering support, encouragement, and understanding. Your love and belief in me have been a driving force, and I truly couldn't continue to serve this community with, in this capacity, without it. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor. So we all know that the speeches get a little longer as we go down the line, so. Thank you, JP, for allowing me your time. So good afternoon, and welcome to our annual reorganization meeting. I'd like to thank my fellow council members for entrusting me with the honor and responsibility to serve as Newton's next mayor. I'd also like to thank and welcome our town manager, Tom Russo, municipal clerk Teresa Osmond, deputy municipal clerk Catherine Alcock, our CFO, Tom Ferry, and all the municipal staff here today, who I truly believe is the best municipal team in the county, if not in the state. My thanks and appreciation to each of you for the great customer service that you provide each day to the residents, the business owners, and the visitors in the town of Newton. I'd also like to thank and welcome Commissioner Alan Henderson, here representing our county government. Being the county seat is something we take a lot of pride in, and I look forward to this council working collaboratively with the county on ongoing exciting projects this coming year. I'd also like to welcome Assemblymen Mike and Ganamort, representing our twenty-fourth, our district, our twenty-fourth legislative district. Thank you, Assemblyman Ganamort, for administering administering today's oath of office for me. In your tenure tenure thus far as our assemblyman, you've already been an incredible partner in our collective work combating domestic violence, and I look forward to our continued partnership, not only in that arena, but here in the town of Newton, in the in the county of Sussex. Other distinguished guests in attendance today are Senator John Bramnick, Judge Michael Carlucci, Willie Tolba from Congresswoman Sherrill, Mikey Sherrill's office. I wanna welcome our chief of police, Joe Danabell. Bless you.
Thank you.
And members of the Newton Police Department, members of the Newton Fire Department, our OEM team, led by Lieutenant Dan Finkel, and members of our Newton First Aid Squad. We very much look forward to working with all of you as we continue to protect and serve the residents of the town of Newton. Thank you all for serving selflessly and putting your lives on the line each and every day for all of us. Welcome also Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Joseph Picarello. We continue and look forward to our partnership with the Newton School District. Also here with us today are our town attorney, town engineers, legal advisors, our town planner, our town auditor, and several volunteers from our boards and commissions. Thank you all for being here today. We can't do our jobs successfully and effectively without each of you, our professional services team providing sound guidance each and every step of the way. Get ready, because we have a lot of work to do, and I'm excited to continue to work with each of you. My heartfelt thanks and appreciation to my family and friends who are here today, who've come near and far to show their love and support. I can't thank you enough to Greg, Jordan, who's in Atlanta, Madeline, Catherine, Mommy and Mike. As you know, this job requires lots of hours away from home, meetings, phone calls, and this year weddings. And sometimes even you are all under the public microscope more than you'd like to be. Thank you for your unconditional love and support and understanding. I wanna thank Mayor Kuss for his mayoral year. JP, thank you for your leadership, your voice of calm, and for always having the research needed at the tips of your fingers for the deliberations we were having. You led our meetings with a fair and calming presence, allowing all voices to be heard and providing a forum where people felt they were able to speak whatever was on their minds. It was a pleasure to work with you weekly on Newton's priorities. So I wanna begin by highlighting, underscoring, and reinforcing that we are all on the same team, united in vision and goals, always working for the betterment of Newton. Period. Whatever your role is in our work, whatever the title is next to your name, we are a united team, working to build consensus, each with our unique competencies, leading with a shared passion. On this day, as we were elected to serve the town of Newton, the residents, and our businesses, and to serve all of you as well, we take that job seriously. And by the form of our council manager, form of government, we are mandated to work as such. So, did you know that over the past year, the town of Newton unveiled a new website? Hopefully. Thank you, Tom, Kat, and everyone else who worked hard on that site to develop it and create its content. And on that website, amongst other great content, is a compelling list of reasons of why you should move to Newton. I wonder if anybody knew that. If you didn't, I'd like to share that list with you. In no particular order, but it's numbered this way. The first reason of why you should move to Newton is because of our dedicated police force. The next is our dedicated volunteer fire department and our dedicated first aid squad. Our non, our next is our nonpartisan council manager form of government. The next is our well-maintained historic district, including Spring Street, featuring fine shops and eateries. Next is our town pool, offering free memberships, available swim lessons, and more. Next, we have fiber optic high-speed technology available through most of the town. That might seem like inconsequential, but our county folks and our state folks know, because they're working hard on the front lines, how important that is, and how throughout the rest of the state that doesn't exist. We, next is our great parks and our playgrounds and multiple recreational youth sports programs. We have free public preschool and a dynamic public education system. Next is our free senior shuttle for those of us more experienced who are fifty-five and over. We have a senior membership group, our primetime seniors, active and the backbone of our community. We have public and wat, we have public water and sewer. Also, something that sometimes we take for granted, knowing the 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 systems across the rest of the state. Newton Medical Center is in our backyard and right down the street, as is Sussex County Community College. We have an extensive trail network for hiking throughout the county and multiple state parks, including the recently renovated Sussex Branch Rail Trail within the town. Skiing and snowboarding are less than thirty minutes away at Mountain Creek in Vernon. We have close proximity to New York City with commuter Lakeland bus service to Port Authority Terminal right here from the town of Newton. We have ample public parking contrary to popular belief on those theater nights, available throughout the downtown and surrounding areas. We have several houses of worship, many great places in town to worship and practice the faith of your choice. And we have a thriving arts community and the Newton Theater, all just to name a few. I hope you'll agree that the list of reasons to move to Newton is impressive. That list represents a lot of public-facing and behind-the-scenes work, and that impressive list also requires a lot of maintenance. That is why this year, we are committed to accomplishing the following, which is just a few of the projects and goals our amazing municipal team will be working on under Tom's leadership. In our manager, HR, Parking Authority, Court Enforcement, Clerk, Court, and Finance Departments, we will be working on electrical upgrades to Town Hall, Central Plaza, Adams Plaza, all through our Neighborhood Preservation Program grant funding. We will be working on Hampton Township Shared Services with our CMFO. We will be working to grow and improve our landlord registration census and all that comes with that. And to follow up on our new website, we're working on a new town app where we will provide, be able to provide round-the-clock information and accessibility to all that the town provides in terms of services. Our legal team will continue their work on Thirty-three Mill Street and the Brookside Pilot. We will continue to review our fee ordinances, and we are working on a film-ready ordinance to invite and support the new legislation throughout the state that is inviting people to create movies and TV shows and films in the state of New Jersey. We've already created an inventory of wonderful locations throughout the town, and we want to see movie sets here. We're gonna be talking about what it means and the impact to our nonprofits and the fees that they pay to do the work that they do in our town. We'll be working on a paving notification ordinance and addressing the issue of stacking in our buildings and in the residences in town. Our marketing team, Parks, Recreation, and Pool Teams are going to be continuing to work with the Greater Newton Chamber of Commerce on their events. We'll continue our work with the mayor's wellness and heart-safe campaigns, both to benefit our town employees and the community at large. And we'll continue to work with promoting our businesses, interviewing business owners, bringing people into town. And just this week, our town manager was interviewed by ROI New Jersey to talk about all the wonderful things happening in the town of Newton. And we'll continue to work on our website and all of our social media and cross-referencing all of our initiatives. Our police, fire, first aid squad, OEM and dispatch. Priorities this year include working on our dispatch center upgrades, firehouse number one exterior site improvements as part of the Capitol, firehouse number one furniture to finish off the work there, working on getting funding for our fire museum under the Neighborhood Preservation Program. We'll be working on OEM ICS and additional equipment for our Newton Police Department to keep them safe and us safe as well. In our planning, zoning, historic, and community development and construction departments, we will continue and hopefully finally bring home our Armory Redevelopment Agreement and pilot with the sale of the Armory to Renetco and the and the continued cleanup and expansion of that property. We will work on working with those that want to continue to explore opportunities to develop and rehab the former county jail. We will continue our work with Sussex County Community College on the Maguire Redevelopment Projects. We have some new businesses coming in town, including Penny Rose Penny Rose Coffee Company, a bakery, and restaurants. We're going to get open The Spot Martini Bar and Restaurant on Spring Street and Thor Labs in their fourth project in expansion in the EJ Brooks Building, which we know is going to bring additional jobs. And the Water Street Cannabis Retailer Bud City, New Jersey, will be opening this year, all to add to the revenue side of the business at hand. Through our planner, Jessica Caldwell, Jessica Caldwell Dykstra, we're going to be working on the implementation of the We're going to be working on the implementation of the 2025-2035 Round Four Affordable Housing Plan, which was moved by the legislature in last year's session. We're going to be working on a community ed a community energy plan to look for efficiencies and to save money. We're going to be looking, as I mentioned, for grants, but a designation for our fire museum on the Historic Register. We'll be working on our planned endorsement renewal and continue our work in sustainable NJ. We're already registered, but we're pursuing that bronze level in the first quarter of 2025. For our DPW engineering, water and sewer projects, gosh, we could talk for a long time about the runway for that, but just to talk about a couple, we're going to be working, continue to work on the board on the Boardwalk Trail connection with Memory Park, Corey. Our Babe Ruth Field Drainage Improvements, including the Brook dredging. We're going to assess the Dollar General flooding situation and look for grants, and as we work on that project, we'll be working with our schools and our superintendent on the Merriam School Signs and Stop Signs. We have a New Hampshire Street project that will include ADA ramps, Diller Avenue, Pine Street Drainage, our continued improvements at our recycling center, our road paving paving projects, and finish that rocker that roller hockey rink improvement project this year. Right, Matt? Including all the infrastructure work that that needs to be done as part of our 10-year capital plan on our water and sewer system. There's so many exciting projects. I hope you all agree. As a municipal government entity, we are in the business of customer service. The work conducted here, the decisions made by this team, the day-to-day results of our staff, all revolve around the customer service we provide to our residents, our taxpayers, our businesses, and our community partners. The people of the town of Newton want to know that their children attend good schools, that their streets are safe, that emergency services will respond when needed, that their water supply can be counted on, and that they receive good and fair services in exchange for the taxes they pay. These are not political issues. These are quality of life issues. And our staff provides great customer service on a day-to-day basis consistently and with great pride in our town. As I mentioned before, our team is the best municipal team in the county, and we thank you for your service to the town of Newton. When I think about all that the town of Newton has to offer, I'm proud of the community we have, and I want others to feel the same. We're working hard to make Newton the town where you can not only live, but work and play too. Where residents feel a sense of community and where visitors want to return to time and time again. We have so many recreational opportunities at our parks, at our ballfields, and at our beautiful beautiful pool facilities. We have great events planned for this year. We have family movie nights, concerts in the park, the Fall Festival, Newton Day, Taste of Newton parades, and more. What a great time to be part of the Newton community. As I mentioned before, we have a lot of work to do, but we're ready. And as I look around this room, I know we have the right team in place to continue to accomplish great things. And I'm so proud to be on this journey with each and every one of you. Congratulations to Michelle and JP. I'm glad the voters of Newton chose to reelect you to the council. Together with Matt and Sandy, I know this council truly loves the town of Newton and is committed to doing the best job possible, leading with integrity and respect in partnership with all of you who to whom work to make the town of Newton as great as it can be. Tom, I'm excited, so excited to work with you and your team in the capacity as mayor this year. And I truly appreciate all the hard work everyone on this municipal staff puts in puts forth on a daily basis. I know that we all share in the vision and the passion for the town of Newton, and I thank you in advance for your support and continued hard work. We have a lot of work to do, but I'm confident we'll get it all done. Tom lives, breathes, and sweats the town of Newton 24/7. And I know you've got a lot of goals and ideas, Tom, this year that this council looks to support you and your team in accomplishing and making happen. A friend of ours from out of town once asked me not that long ago, before he made his first trip up here. He asked me about the town of Newton and why our family is involved. After a 15-minute monologue, I know he got off early, he got off easy, about all the wonderful attributes of the town of Newton and an honest and transparent reflection about our challenges too. He turned to me and said, gosh, you're really passionate about the town of Newton. He said, your face lights up with pride when you talk about the town of Newton and what goes on there. I said, yeah, you have to come up and visit. We'll take you to the Farmer's Daughter. You got to check out the the theater. There's a lot to do here. Since then, he and his wife have started to come up. But what I want to say to you about that is that whether you work here, live here, or play here, it is my hope that we all light up with pride when we reflect on our great little town, the county seat, the center of Sussex County. Thank you all again for being here today, and thank you for your love for the town of Newton. May God bless us as we move forward, working together this year, always for a better Newton. Thank you. Okay, so we do have a hundred-page agenda. However, the vast majority is under consent, so we'll move forward with it quickly. Next up is our consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the town council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Mr. Russo, will you please review the resolutions?
Sure. Number one, banks as depositories. Two, town manager for hearing officer. Three, payment of recurring bills. Four, legal newspapers. Five, schedule for council meetings. Six, rate of interest for non-payment of taxes. Seven, officials to sign checks. Eight, CFO for bond anticipation notes. Nine, tax assessor, town attorney, town manager for tax appeals. Ten, mayor for planning board. Eleven, deputy mayor for planning board. Twelve, cancellation of small balances. Thirteen, state contracts and purchasing cooperatives. Fourteen, town events recognized and town endorsed. Fifteen is EEO enforcement guidance. Sixteen, Deb Danielson for recycling. Seventeen, Petty Cash. Eighteen, ad hoc redevelopment team. Nineteen, emergency planning committee. Twenty, Teresa Schlosser for tax search officer. Twenty-one, Michelle Teets, council liaison, Board of Ed. Twenty-two, John Paul Coos, council liaison, EDC. Twenty-three, Sandy Diglio, council liaison, Historic Commission. Twenty-four, current fund balance policy. Twenty-five, water sewer fund balance policy. Twenty-six, Jenny Raftery, Clean Communities. Twenty-eight, municipal order auditor. Twenty-nine, temporary current operating budget and water sewer budget. Thirty is Low Sap with Nissavatia. Thirty-one, tax collector to sell municipal liens. Thirty-two, Dave Simmons, water engineer. Thirty-three, Eric Bernstein, town attorney. Thirty-four, Jessica Caldwell, town planner. Thirty-five, Keith Mitchell for insurance agent. Thirty-six, certain board and commission members get reappointed. Thirty-seven, Fred Marglon, alternate sewer engineer. Thirty-eight, Holzhauer and Hollenstein, defensive state-level tax appeals. Kathy Starott, thirty-nine, volunteer senior citizen coordinator, Excel Environmental for Engineering Services. Forty-one, Dakotas for Redevelopment Council. Gibbons, PC for Bond Councils. Forty-two, Marty Allen for Tax Appeals. Forty-three, Helen LaFois, Advisory Rec Commission Liaison. Forty-five, Claimant Certification Procedure. Forty-six, Insurance Broker for Benefits. Forty-seven, reimbursement town employees for vehicle expenses. Forty-eight, PSNS for Alternate Water and Sewer Engineer. Forty-nine, KKPR for Marketing. Fifty, Kai Cremando as ACO of the town. Fifty-one, Cannon Group for QPA. Fifty-two, Phoenix Advisors Independent Registered Advisor. Suburban Consulting as Sewer Engineer is fifty-three. Skank Price, Smith &amp; King, Tax Appeal and Municipal Conflict Attorney. Fifty-four, John Paul Coos, Liaison Advisory Shade Tree Commission. Fifty-six, Chilla Business Council, Labor Relations. Fifty-seven, approval of certain purchases in excess of bid threshold. Fifty-eight, extension of contract chem supply bid sixteen R 2022. Fifty-nine, change order one for Duma, Duma, Valley View, and Babett. Sixty is Phillips Price, Conflict Town Planner. Our NPP implementation plan is sixty-one. Change order seven for renovations. Firehouse one is sixty-two. Sixty-three, Matthias Banner, Class C, Regular Member Historic Commission. Sixty-four, extends budget process dates as per the state. Sixty-five, bills and vouchers for payment. One resolution off consent and one appointment off consent. Mayor.
Look at that work we're already getting done, just like that. Do any members of the council have any requests to pull any of the consent agenda items? All right, seeing none, I need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Teets, a second by Councilman Coos. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Coos?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois? Yes. Item number thirteen is a resolution, resolution twenty-seven dash twenty-five, to concur with the appointment of the town manager's appointment of special police officers. Any discussion? Questions? Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-seven dash twenty-two five.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Diglio, a second by Deputy Mayor Dixon. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Coos?
I abstain.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois? Yes. Item number fourteen is the mayor's appointment of a Class Two representative to the Newton Planning Board. This is the appointment of the town manager. No action is needed for that.
Thank you, Mayor.
At this, you're welcome. Thank you. At this point in time, we will open the meeting to the public. Anyone that would like to step forward, please state your name and address for the record. Assemblyman Ganamort.
Mayor, Mike Ganamort. I just want to take a quick opportunity to thank you very sincerely, Mayor, for the honor of the history and your oath of office. You laid out a very ambitious agenda for Newton. I think Newton is primed for a really great and exciting year in 2025. And we know you are going to deliver on it because that's what you do. That's what you do for Newton and everything else that you commit yourself to. And it's been proven you were a competent, capable, successful mayor of Newton before, and we know that's exactly what you're going to be again in 2025. And I think that the mayor would agree that she and all Newton residents benefit greatly from the fact that this this council works together in a collaborative and constructive way. You're supported by a phenomenal town manager, town hall employees, professionals, and volunteers. And all of you, that's a that's a long list, all encompassing. All of you have friends and partners in the 24th Legislative District of New Jersey. On behalf of Senator Perkersface, Assemblywoman Dawn Fantasia, and myself, we want to work with you to achieve those many items on your ambitious list, Mayor, so please solicit our help. We very sincerely want to work with you on those things and be here with you to to get them done and celebrate their success. Now, this is my third event in Newton this year. We're only two weeks in, so I want to keep up the pace, and I'm asking for your help to to keep me to keep me on that. But for now, congratulations, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, returning and continuing council members. Look forward to working for you in a very successful 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblyman. I know everybody's anxious to get to the food, so. Any other? Okay. At this.
Anybody on Zoom?
Oh, yes, thank you. Do we have anybody on Zoom? Not for speaking. Okay. Any other council or manager comments, business for today? Our next meeting, Terry?
Would be January 27th at 7:00 PM.
Our next meeting is January 27th at 7:00 PM here in council chambers or available on Zoom. As always, we welcome the public and anyone else to attend our meetings. That is how we get informed, is hearing from you directly. So please reach out. With no other business being noted, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 12:56, please.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 12:56.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Teets and a second by Councilman Coos to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Tom?
Please join us for refreshments, conference room behind us or upstairs. We thank you all for coming.
Okay, I have stuff for you to sign, and I have stuff for four out of five of you to sign.